Welcome to the Central School District Board Meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications, Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the Board, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the Board Secretary or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approved process as outlined in Board Policy KL. This form may be found at our website or by calling the District Office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board to review an issue. However, the Board Chair or the Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication and if so, what avenue is preferred. Thank you for your attendance at this meeting of the Central School Board. And those comment cards are actually out front. That's where you can find them. We have one. Yay. Okay, the first up on the agenda is actually to review the agenda. So Superintendent?
Yep. No changes to the agenda. We do have, I know Cece has one document that she is adjusting from that piece, but otherwise there is no adjustment.
Okay, pretty typical and fairly short agenda. So, let's work through this. The actual, first topic then is actually comments from the public. So I saw one, are you ready to come in?
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Sure.
Nice. Come on up. Why don't you bring that card to us and then, yeah, me too. Okay. Good topic.
Yes?
Introduce yourself and then you get three minutes to...
My name is Jamie Ward. My son Christian goes to Central. I've had an opportunity since he's been in high school to talk with other kids his age. Don't get me wrong, I feel that college is very important. And we have a great Willamette Promise Program at Central High School. But I believe that we are sweeping some of our kids under the carpet, so to speak, or forgetting about them, so to speak. We don't offer any trade programs at Central High School, for the most part. And there are so many blue collar jobs out there that kids can get into just coming out of high school and not winding up eighty thousand dollars in debt. I work for a company. It's eighteen months apprenticeship program and they wind up making forty dollars an hour and not have to go to college. And I know that being in the union and working with a lot of other programs, I know that there are a lot of places out there that would love to have our young kids come to work for them. And I just would like to see some new programs at our high school. So as not to sweep all these kids under the carpet. Because, you know, maybe they don't want to go to college. Maybe they can't afford to go to college right now. You know, Oregon has a very high dropout rate. And it's because we've lost, I think our kids have lost interest in things, you know? Not everybody's interested in going to college, you know, after going to school for twelve years, you know? They want to get out there and do things and experience hand-on stuff, you know, infrastructure things. I've been talking to people about my interest in this and I have a lot of people that would be willing to come do a job fair for our school district if that's something that we might take an interest in. And not, I'm not college jobs. I'm talking, you know, like crane operators and tree trimmers and electricians and things like that. I've already been talking to people and there are a lot of other people out there that feel the same way that I do about bringing trades back into our schools.
That's awesome, Jamie. I think we're about to do a retreat later on this month. We're going to be putting together a strategic plan. We've been working on that for a year or so. I think this is something that all of us as the Board want to work on. I think you'll see it there. And I think we already have some other things in the works.
So just, I'll quickly share because I think you are, we are working towards this. We have a great principal at the high school. We started some work last year and starting to continue to build pathways right now. We have several of them, but there are other pathways we are looking at. There is also a large conversation happening in Polk County tied to internships that we are trying to develop a process of, for companies that have an interest or have the ability to do some of that with students, what that might look like. So please know we, part of this is through the High School Success Act, otherwise also known as Measure 98, which is legislation that was passed, I want to say, two, three years ago now?
Two, three.
Two years ago. We are in our second cycle of that. So part of, as I was hired, it was clear from the Board that we were going to make sure that we had both a career and college readiness pathways for our students so they could go into those areas that they wanted to. Because again, I agree with you, we want our kids both college and career...
You and I talked.
Ready. Yes, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
And so we are working to continue that. We'll continue to have that conversation with the Board and how we structure that funding specifically for one of those areas.
Well, if you would like my help, I have lots of people that are...
Yep. We've got this and we've got a committee, so I will pass that on.
There are lots of people out there, unions and companies that would be willing to come do a job fair, you know?
We're smiling because there will be one this year. It is being organized by SED Corp., which is our regional economic development partner. And all the Polk County schools will be invited and they're having it at the Convention Center in Salem. And it'll be a big job fair for students looking to connect to those kind of opportunities.
If you need a list of people, companies that want to, you know, that would love to come, you know?
Yep, I will reach back out to you.
Fantastic.
Thanks much, Jamie.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, any, I don't think we have any other comments. So that brings us to our standing reports and recognition. And I think I'll turn it over to Cece for our financial updates.
So I don't, did not include a financial report because again, we, there hasn't been much that's happened since June 30th and you got that report. So I did not include a report at this time. But I do want to catch you up a little bit on the maintenance and capital projects. There is some material here and then there was an attachment which are, is an update of the projects we mentioned. I'm going to bring Brian Weatherly up to report to you on how that's been going. And what you would see tomorrow outside those windows if you were to be here tomorrow evening. It'll look very different, hopefully.
Cece or Brian, just because we have a couple of new Board members, could you maybe back up just a little bit and explain how we come up with the maintenance projects and kind of the cycle and rhythm and how we review that at the Board?
He didn't get to do that before. So Brian Weatherly is our new Facilities Director. He's only been with us a few months. So we, the last time that a Facility Strategic Plan was developed, at the same time the consultants went through and gave a list of really sort of big deferred maintenance projects. What are some of those things that are about ready to be placed or will need to be replaced? And how is the District looking at maintaining them? And I am very happy to say in the last six years, we have really taken care of a lot of those major needs. And so each year, we look again, what's failed since the last time or what will need to be repaired. And some of it's due to changing needs. For example, last year, one of our big projects was getting some portable classrooms at Ash Creek. And so that sort of thing, looking at where do we find the funding for that? How do we do the project management for that? Do we need to hire contractors? Does our two-person maintenance staff, two people, is it something they can do themselves? And so each year, we do minor maintenance throughout the year, but obviously summers are big time. That's our opportunity to get things done. And sitting down with Brian this year, after he had a chance to get to know each of the buildings, looking at the things we had thought might need to be tackled and seeing if those really were the priorities, we put together the list that's in front of you. And then Brian and his one other maintenance person and a couple of maintenance helpers that they get for the summer have been working on that. So tonight's a little bit of an update about what those projects are and where we are on those. And then we will start throughout this next school year, looking at what's next for next summer. And we will also probably be starting a larger facilities conversation to be looking forward to actually adding classrooms and things. So that will fold in. But this has really just been the things that we either had planned out a few years ago that we would try to tackle or that have come up, so.
Thank you. So like Cece said, I'm pretty new. Actually going to be four months, I believe, on Thursday. Will be actually four months. And I've had an opportunity to get around and see a lot of the places and get a lot, we've actually got a lot of work done this summer so far. We have a lot left to do. Some of it's going to carry over into the fall, of course, and then we'll start working on the inside stuff and getting some of these things knocked out. I want to say that I'm very impressed with the school district itself. Again, I really enjoy working here. This has just been phenomenal for me. I love it and I hope to make this place a much better place before I leave. So where we're at with some of the projects that we've got going on, I'm going to start with the HVAC at Independence. The upgrades are ready to be done. We had a hiccup with getting the equipment here, so that's going to be a really tight timeline. But the contractor's confident that he can get it done in the window. So we're looking probably the end of the month. It'll be just before school starts, they get it in, get it tested, get it running. So, but we should be good to go there.
And that's not anything like air conditioning or anything big. This is replacing units that we've had.
They're older units, and they're rooftop units. So it really won't be a problem getting, getting the stuff in and get it running. I am very pleased with the floor tile at Independence. I don't know if anybody's been over there to look at it, but if you know what the old floor tile looked at, looked like, and you go see the new stuff, you will be amazed. We're not quite done with it, but it's, it looks really good. I'm very pleased with it. Also pleased with the leaks at MES. I don't think that it's as big a problem as we thought it was. We're going to try a couple of different things. Getting up underneath the ceiling and looking at the wall, I think we've determined that it's a different issue. So we're not going to waste any time with the grinding and the resealing and all that kind of stuff. We're just going to have it done. We'll start with the roof and work on what we think it might be. The carpet in the resource room will not be done this year. I've spoken to the teacher in that room and I think there's a couple of products that are out there that we're going to consider looking at next year. So we may be able to handle that next year. The wallet, Talmage, is another one of those things that I really have no information on and I won't know what it is until it starts really raining. And I understand and I have a better idea of what it might be. I'm going on the word of others and I don't really want to do that, so we're going to hold off on that one as well. The bleachers at Talmage, which definitely need to be replaced badly, they really are in bad shape. I think we're looking at sometime in the fall and winter to get those done. We quoted them out. It was sixty-five thousand dollars, I think, if we were to do them over the summer. When I talked to the vendor, the installer, he said, "I can give you a great price reduction." And so I'm still kind of waiting on a quote for that, but I think we'll be in pretty good shape getting that done in sometime in November or December. I think that's about all we had really at Talmage right now. Couple little things that we're going to deal with in-house. The high school, we are, we had another little hiccup with the roof. He was supposed to start today, but he got held up at a, at a different job site. So I'm hearing the middle of the month is when we can expect that to be done, but that's ready to go. That's out there in the works.
Is that the perennial roof leak?
That was the perennial leaking on the roof.
Yeah, and I think we've, if anybody, if any of you have ever been up on the roof, which I don't know how many of you have been up on the roof over there, there are a ton of roof lines. I've never seen as many roof lines as this structure has. There's a ton of them. And it's all different makeups. It's, it's a whole bunch of different roofs that have been kind of cobbled together. And so we're really working at it, piecemealing it together to get it to kind of hold up. We've got, there may be some other issues down the road, but I think we're handling the serious stuff now. One of my goals is to implement some sort of a preventative maintenance program where we're more diligent in the roof maintenance. It was pretty bad when I got up on the roof originally and looked at it. And my maintenance guys have been able to take care of the majority of it, get it clean. And that's one of my goals is to keep it that way. So there's a lot of things that I'm looking at, different ways that we can stay on top of this maintenance stuff that, so we don't end up with these big problems and we don't end up with any kind of big catastrophe. We can kind of, you know, stay on top of these things. That, the HVAC systems, all of the HVAC systems, we need to be a little bit better on that. So we're working on that and getting that stuff kind of updated and cleaned up a little bit.
But yeah, this is the three phases. If we spend a hundred and fifty thousand over the next, last year, this year, and next, we're putting up the million dollar replacement.
It should be, it should hold us up for quite a while, so. The bleachers have all been repaired and serviced at the high school and at Ash Creek. Those were in dire need of some servicing, so they've serviced those. When the inspector was out, he gave us a kind of some options on some things that we should probably look at doing, which we'll probably look at next year. Cece doesn't know about that, some of that stuff yet, but we'll be talking later again as we follow up, debrief over the summer, we'll get into some of that stuff. The backstops, those are the backboards at both Ash Creek and the high school. We didn't budget for that much to do all of them, so we did the primary ones at the, at the main gym at the Panther Pit at the high school. And those were, have all been serviced and cleaned and they look great. The floors look great, floors there have been done and the gym floors. The greenhouse is still kind of hanging there. We've, we've been waiting for some student help and some staff guidance, but it's still kind of hanging out there waiting, so nothing's happened with that. Quotes are out for the fire, or not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself. The fire alarm upgrade is still going to be out there for the high school. We haven't, I don't think we've done anything with that. We haven't moved forward with that at all.
Have you had a chance to look at the solar system and the monitoring on the solar system?
Not yet. Nope, not yet. That's, that's on the list yet for the summer too, to kind of get up there. I got to go through the, all the notebooks and find out the vendors and who was the installer and that, so we can kind of get some, you know, the ONMs on it, so we can see what we're supposed to be doing, what we should be doing with cleaning them and maintaining them. So that's on the list though, to get that done. Because I've heard that it's been a while since that's happened. So we're going to be looking at that, definitely. Thank you for that, by the way.
And mostly it's getting the monitoring again, so we understand and can promote what we're doing.
Right.
But I think we just kind of lost track.
Right.
So it's right up your alley to take a look at.
Yep. Yeah, I've come to see that there's a lot of things that have just been kind of put by the wayside that we hope to kind of either implement or reintegrate into the system to get things rolling the way they should be. So Ash Creek, we are looking at quotes for the intercomp system there. And that should be done over winter break. The guys are confident that they can probably get it in, install the stuff over winter break. So I think we're looking at that. It just got, time just kind of got away from us and we didn't know for sure if we were going to move forward with that yet or not. And so that's, that's kind of where we're at with, with that one. And the last one, as Cece said, our modular should be delivered hopefully tomorrow, fingers crossed. There's been kind of a couple delays on it. We have the spot all graded out back there, ready to go. We've had some tree trimming done, so they can get it in. I've got to go over after the meeting and tape off some stuff to something to come in and get it done. So hopefully we'll be, we'll be sitting here next month and we'll have a nice, brand-new portable that's all up and running and operational.
Oh, because the, there was a portable back here that was used by Central U Sports for an office and then we had it for extra. It burned down January 2nd.
So what, are they going to come back and use it or are we going to use it?
We actually are, a long-held dream of our folks in Student Services and especially our housing, our homeless and migrant ed coordinator have been to have more of a welcome center where families can come, get some one-stop-shop service in information about the school. And Angie Agiri, our longtime homeless ed coordinator retired and our new homeless ed coordinator, I've kind of said, "Well, if that seems like that might be a good spot for something that's a little bit more of a wraparound service." But that coordinator position is already provided, but really out of a teeny-tiny office in here. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now. That's, that's probably one of the better uses for it.
Great. Thanks, Brian.
That's what I got. Thank you.
So next up, I think Cece, you've got the PERS update?
Yes, so I've tried to do this every couple of years at the end of the two-year biennium cycle. This is the time when the, our PERS, our Public Employee Retirement System rates change. And so I like to go back and take a look at what the impact of those rate changes was on us and kind of what we're looking at for the future. And so I, I put a lot of narrative there and I, we'll try to summarize it slightly that basically there has been a lot of volatility in the rates of PERS. And that is due to a couple things. One is the legislature came up with an idea at one point that they thought was going to save public employers, and this isn't just schools, of course, this is cities and counties and fire districts and water districts, thought would save them a lot of money. And so based on that information, a board of people and professionals who run PERS lowered rates dramatically. The Superintendent and I at the time were pretty certain that those rates would not be found to be legal and that we would then be suffering from a bounce back two years later or four years later and actually be in worse shape. And that's exactly what happened. So I think at that time was the first time we took the money that would have gone to PERS and started setting some of it aside. And we've had those reserves now for the last few years to be able to contribute to PERS increases. But in fact, what did happen is that those rates have risen dramatically. There was another dramatic increase facing us for the next two years, projected for another increase two years after that, and probably at least until 2026, we can expect these rate increases. There was additional PERS reform this legislative year and there's still a cry for more ahead. So we'll, you know, hopefully we'll be in shape to weather those. But the other thing I have included, so that first page of the analysis is actually just a graphic of what those rates have done. The chart on the left shows those rates. And when we're talking those percentage rates, remember that's a percentage of every dollar. So as high as in our current year, what we're facing, starting with this July payroll, is seventeen percent of every dollar, seventeen cents of every dollar, we pay employees who have been with us the longest, the tier-one employees, seventeen cents going to PERS for that, just to pay their, their PERS contributions. On top of that, we pay for every employee a six percent. That is an amount that was created with a new system and we chose as an employer to pay that, that's on top of that. And we also pay a little bit more for some debt service, which I'll explain on the next page. But the good news in those rate increases is on the chart on the right, which is our PERS participation. So tier-one and tier-two are much more generous benefit plans. They are defined benefit plans. Participants in those plans are guaranteed a return on the money that's invested for their retirement. That guaranteed return is, in some years, outrageously high. And yet that money has to be dedicated to those folks. So in order to fund that, to make sure that that money will be there for their retirement, those rates are much higher. But as you can see, the folks in tier-one, tier-two, and I'm just going back to this 2011, sort of 12th time period because that's when I got here, and seventy-one percent of our employees were in tier-one, tier-two at that time. A lot of high seniority, high-tenured folks. And those, as those people have been retiring, this very dramatic shift where currently thirty-eight percent of our workforce as of the end of last year are tier-one, tier-two. So the higher rates we're paying, luckily we are paying on fewer people. And I have, in fact, speaking to other school business officials, but this past weekend, I was at another public conference. I was with other Oregon mayors. And people are seeing this shift, of course, but I, very few are seeing it as dramatically as ours. So that's good. It, it has that effect of actually lowering the cost of our PERS overall for us. But the second part of the chart, and this is really numbers nerding out, and I will not go into detail on this, but I'll be glad to if you're interested. So in 2003, we had the opportunity to sort of sell our debt service to willing investors. And if, when it was done in the mid, early 2000s in the mortgage industry, it caused a mortgage crisis. People went out and sold mortgages, right? They made them into a, something people could buy and bought a bunch of mortgages and then nobody could make their mortgage payments and that became a very bad investment. Our investment has been good for our investors. They have gotten a nice rate of return. But what we like is that we have the money that we got by selling them our debt service, we are earning interest on. So you always want to make sure we're earning more interest than we're paying out to those people. And they're getting a nice little return on their investment, but we are making more money. So that difference is actually going to pay down our debt. And the, many districts have created, but not all, what are called these side accounts. So we have this side account of money set aside and every month, when it's time to make our PERS payments, they take some money out of this little investment account we have and contribute. So basically what the, what the chart on the left shows, sort of the yellow and gray chart, is our average annual earnings rate over time has been the nine-point-three-nine percent. That's what we have earned on the money we set aside in our side account. And the money we paid our investors is five-point-six-eight percent. So we have historically had money going to help us pay down the debt. Otherwise, our rates would be much higher because we wouldn't have this side amount and we'd be paying that directly each month in our PERS bill. But the last, the bottom chart is what you hear if you follow PERS news at all, and that is what is called the unfunded liability. If everybody in our district retired today, how much money do we have set aside to pay them, the retirement they are owed? And on this chart, negative is actually good. That means your liability, what, at zero, what you owe employees at retirement, you have sitting in your account with PERS, with this bond, you would have at zero, you have that funded. And when the chart is negative, you have more money on hand. If those folks could retire, you could easily pay their retirement. And unfortunately, any... bond, you would have at zero, you have that funded. And when the chart is negative, you have more money on hand. If those folks could retire, you could easily pay their retirement. And unfortunately, any points above the chart means that you don't. That's how far away you are from being able to fund that retirement. And so our net liability, our unfunded actuarial liability at this point, at the end of 2017, and that's as far as this goes, was at 126%. So that was unfortunate. We are a quarter away. We are unable to pay a quarter of our people. But
Is that for the district or is that at the state?
This is our, this is ours alone.
Same picture at the state level?
State level, yeah, is actually worse, right? So overall, many districts are in far worse shape than us.
This would be just if everybody retired?
Everybody retired at once. And that's what the state kind of has to look at. So it's not going to happen. That's why the state pension system is not bankrupt, as other public pensions have been, because not everyone's going to retire at once. And a good investment year could take care of this, right? So if you had really great investment returns in the market, that would reduce this as well.
Not like today.
Right? So not like 2018, so where things were great until December, and then they all went to heck. So this year, so far, returns have been good. And every time there's reform at the legislature, they have to recalculate this, and they rejigger this information. So changes are going to be happening in the next couple of years. And for example, now things like with the latest PERS reform, retirees can actually work back. If Peggy wants to go back to work in a school district, she'll be able to do so. She's been retired for six months. She can go back to work. In the past, that school district wouldn't, she's not going to, no way. So if she went back to work, the school district she worked for would not have to pay anything to PERS. She would be eligible to continue to work and not, and there would be no liability. There'd be no retirement obligation. The change is, if we do hire those retirees back now, we have to pay PERS on them. It will not go to their account, however. It will go to our unfunded liability. So those kinds of changes are being made around the state. Some of them are actual cost savings to districts. Some of them aren't necessarily, but they are trying to chip away at this big problem. So if the takeaway is, yes, PERS rates are bad. It's a burden on our system. We are paying, between paying this debt, paying the 6% and paying our regular PERS rates, we are spending over 30% of every salary dollar additional on PERS. But we are not in the worst shape. I guess I'll say that as well.
Can I just add to that? I think it's important as we go through this because we are going to continue to get information. I have some information I received today, which you'll get in the Friday report. I haven't even shared it with Cece yet. She's probably seen it, though. Really, our strategies that we have been doing, we need to continue with. I mean, Cece and I are continuously having that conversation, and we'll continue to have that with you as we look at our funding and the reserves and the ability to do that. So we do not take, again, as much as this is 126, Cece is correct, there are school districts that are in much, in different shape than we are. And so again, I think it's really important, in the strategies that we have previously started, we need to continue to have those conversations as we talk about funding and budget each year. Because again, I think Cece is correct, we're going to see this for the next two, at least the next two bienniums, if not more.
And when we pay off our debt, our bonded debt, our PERS debt service, then we won't have that contribution anymore, and that will affect our rates again at that point. Hopefully, we do have it. It will contribute to us, probably to get us through this next big hike. So hopefully, as long as things stay okay in the market, we'll be okay.
Good job.
Thank you. That was really thorough.
It was thorough, but it's so complex. It's such nerdy stuff.
Thank you, Cece.
And again, if you want all the details.
Okay. The OSBA at the conferences will always do some sessions on PERS, and they are really helpful as well. So they come out more from the state level, but it helps understand. And it's something we have to keep in front of us, and it's a big piece of how we balance the budget. So, okay. Thanks, Cece. On to superintendent's report.
So I just have a couple things, two first readings. As we continue to work through, like I said, we're in a good place. Next month, we did receive some updates from OSBA, so Adrian and I are working through those, and we'll have a few more this next board meeting. But first change is specific to JHFF, which is in the students' section. It is the reporting requirements regarding sexual conduct with students. This is specific to adults. The key language changes that are in this policy really deal with identified contractors and agents really talking about that third party, because again, that was not in the current language. And so again, anybody that is consulting contracting with us that potentially could have, that would fall under this policy. And so that's one of the big changes in there. It also gives definition on what is considered a substantiated report, because again, I think that's some of the meaning that has been unclear, and we have seen things over at least my two years here, in the more in my counterpart next to us in the school district of really having to find what this and what we need to report in those processes. So again, it really is cleaning up that language so we can do that. We will, and every year, we do it with our staff. We go through reporting requirements as required with this. We were actually looking at that this morning, and we'll continue that process with our staff each, every year as we begin the school year.
Contractors, are they required, this through safe schools, right?
Yes, but all language, and all that, Cece, but we put language in any contracts that we have. There is clear language that is tied to this, and we'll continue to have that. That says, should this, you are considered, you know, part of the district and from a contractor/employee perspective, and it's identified in the contracts.
And easy online training, like you say.
And you do online training too, the contractors do?
Yep. And the second one is KI, related to community relations, and it's really the public solicitation of district facilities. This policy really is related to fundraising and solicitation by non-school agencies for non-school activities. And the majority of this is really focused on surveys. We all know, there are lots of times we get requested for different types of surveys, could be anything from doctoral research or other people wanting to come in and use our district as a research base, which sometimes that is really good, and sometimes it's not. This policy just is making it clear what that actually means, and again, how we go about administering that. The policy does have some information talking about that. We will share this with families as we do. So any type of survey that either comes from whether the district is going to do it, or whether, for example, one of the ones is the Oregon Healthy Teen Survey, which we do every year. Again, a letter goes out to our family saying, this is, the survey's going to take place. It's at this time, and if you want to opt out. So again, just some language, more dealing with the out-of-school, and making it clear that unless it's school-related, it's prohibited, and some language cleanup on that policy. So again, not big changes from that. So those are the only two policies I have. I have one other update, and I, because we did share it several, or I think it was a week after we had our last board meeting. But we are moving forward with a new kindergarten parent-teacher conference the first two weeks of school. This is really tied to our strategic goal of parent involvement. This is going to help with our transition, really, of our kindergartners into the K-12 education. We've been working with both our elementary school principals and the kindergarten staff to develop this new approach for students entering kindergarten, to allow teachers and staff to get to know our students better by involving their parents at the beginning of the year in these conferences. So and parents will be invited to sit down with their child's teacher and share with us how they best learn, what potentially they might struggle with, where their strengths are, and what they hope to be able to work with us from that. We've been very strategic in this. This has been a conversation that we'll continue to have, because again, we're going to talk about the Student Success Act. So there will be additional conversations we will have about kindergarten, and some of the transition pieces that we are talking about. But this is really focused on the development of the whole child. What can we learn from our parents who know, again, you hear me say, parents are the first teachers? And so how can we gain that knowledge as we move forward? It really is focusing on meeting, especially as we talk about early learning, when we talk about K-2 perspective, it really is focused on their social, emotional, and academic needs. That's really that kindergarten through second grade is learning, teaching kids how to learn. And then three, and moving forward is how are they now using those skills to truly learn the content as they move forward? So each family will be receiving a letter this week from the principals. They have been together and drafted that letter. It's going out. We shared it out publicly, but we're being strategic in putting it both in English and Spanish and sending it out to all of our families, where they'll designate, the first two days will only be half of the classes. The third day will be everyone, but we will really be working off of a half-day schedule. And then we're continuing to work with our partners, because obviously, as an example, the YMCA offers the ability, when we have conferences, that they cover during those times. And so it was very important for us to get out the information over a month ahead of time for our families to be able to prepare for that. So letters are heading out this week. It also, you're going to hear us start to, you will hear me start to talk about kindergarten jumpstart, which is actually programming that's done before we even start school. And so they're beginning conversations as we talk about the Student Success Act, which is tied to more learning time and to that well-rounded, those are two of the areas in that act. So again, those will be some of the conversations. We'll continue with both our staff, community, as we move forward of some options to really support our first, that first look. Some students, if you are not involved in daycare and/or some type of preschool program, kindergarten can be very hard if you come in and there are 25 or more students. And so we're really being strategic in how we do this. And again, this, as I shared with you before, this is coming from our staff in conversations with both staff and our parents of what's the best way to support our kindergarten students. So this is our, will be our first time. As I share with you always, I'm sure there's going to be some great successes, and we'll have some learning things as we go through the first few weeks, and we'll continue to communicate it out. I continue to ask the principals certain questions to make sure that we are prepared as we head into the first part of the school year. So I just want to make, share that information with the board and with the public.
I think you should be commended for that. I think that is just absolutely excellent.
Yeah. Again, I give all credit to our kindergarten teachers and the three elementary principals. They are working extremely well together to make sure that we are supporting all of our students moving forward. So we're really excited for it.
Most of the research suggests that dropouts begin early on, like kindergarten. So that's just really exciting.
That's it for me.
Any questions? Keep moving. So it
So the maintenance and capital projects in your agenda was a duplicate. So sorry, there was no additional information, although I will point out, part of that was about our transportation. We've gone to an above-ground tank, and that leaves an old diesel tank in the ground, and you have to, I know, right? It's scary. It's because you don't know. You don't know what's down there. And we started the decommissioning process, and they have to do several layers of testing. And my text this morning says underground tank soil samples, great. Samples where the dispenser and piping came up showing some signs of leakage, but it was a long time ago. They are working up a quote to say what they might need to do for cleanup. But this is a very old piece of equipment. Could have been much worse. It wasn't supposed to be on there twice, and I would have mentioned the tank last time. Moving on.
Okay. Thanks, Cece. From a board report standpoint, I think everybody should be tracking Monday, August 19th, as an afternoon retreat for the board. We'll be meeting here at 1:00.
Yes.
And we'll be going from 1 till 5?
Till we get done.
Till we get done.
It may be later. We are bringing in OSBA, because we do have, again, when you have new board members, I think it's really important for us to reestablish some of those key things. And so they're going to be with us for the first few hours, and then we'll head into more of what our side of the conversation with the strategic plan and a few other things.
And with that in mind, there is a survey that goes from the OSBA that's preparation for that retreat. So make sure, if you haven't had a chance to do that, to get out there and do that survey. We, backing up a little bit, on the policies, just as a reminder, so this was first reading on the policies for the two that superintendent just covered. So we have now, until next month, to actually read those, provide any feedback, then they become part of the consent agenda. Also in the board package is the list of all the policies that have been updated in the last couple of years. That's something that we asked for when we started this journey of updating policies. And you'll see in there kind of a brief summary of what changed in the policy. So it's a really nice kind of record of reference that we can go back and look at, and we'll be maintaining that going forward. So I assume you both have read through all the policies?
We'll talk through that at the retreat as well.
No. So students are coming back here in less than a month, starting on September 4th. Are there any back-to-school activities that the board should be aware of?
Yeah, I will share out. Those are, the principals have them on their calendars. We're just putting them together, and we'll share that. As I do, Friday reports in the summer are a little bit different. We'll start to get back into the normal, where the top, the first really section is upcoming events. And so I'll, every Friday when I send it out, it will list the open houses, athletic events, any type of other activities or events to have you, if you are available, to be able to come in and watch and see. So yep, we will have open houses coming. Staff, just, it's not on here, but staff also return on the 27th. So principals are back, so we are started. As I said in a text the other day, the 1920 school year has started already, so we're moving.
And you'll be doing your address to the whole faculty and staff. They'll be invited to?
Yes. We will also, on the 29th, as we do every year, I do an opening about an hour, myself and our two union presidents, share out to the staff. It's very important to me. The unions are a part of our leadership team, and they are key voices as we do this work. Since I've been here, we do this collectively together, not only my district staff, administration, the board, but are generally are both our other staff in our classified and licensed, and then I'm also going to say in our student voices, which we're continuing to build. And we'll have the two young ladies that are sitting out here today be joining us in September.
And the board is welcome to join.
Absolutely. Yep. And we will, we will share that. We, I will, it's usually, we start breakfast at about 7:30, but I usually, we usually start those festivities about 8:15. But again, I will have those in your Friday reports as we come in the next couple of weeks here, and with all the activities that we do have throughout, both in August and September as we begin.
Okay. Truly, at next month, because of Labor Day, where our board meetings on the night, so you see that in the board package. Okay, that's all I had. Any questions or any other? Okay. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. It's our typical consent agenda with minutes and personnel recommendations. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Don. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Peggy. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda?
Since you were asking for this before, does everybody know what a consent agenda is?
Everybody clear on the consent agenda? Yeah. Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Please raise your right hand. It passes unanimously. Thank you for that. We are now into the business agenda, and the first topic is a review of our organizational charts.
District to support the district goals and visions as we head into this historic year of planning, and you're going to hear me say that a lot, especially with the passing of the Student Success Act, and know that there are a few more hoops we might have to get through. And, again, we'll know more as of September 27th if it is going to go to a vote, but at this point, we are not there yet. So, attached in this packet, you will see the 2019-20 organizational chart. We look forward to a great year with all of our central staff, and really, all I need is a motion to approve the organizational chart as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Thank you, Peggy. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks for that all. Any questions about the org chart? Okay. All in favor of approving Central School District organization chart for the school year 19 and 20, please raise your right hand. That is approved. Thank you for that, and that takes us to, then, transportation again. Where did Cece go?
She went to grab, I think, the transportation lease.
So, this is regarding a lease purchase of our bus system, and this would be the resolution, just for you to look at, but the details are there. This follows up on a long-term plan. We had to be able to replace buses in our fleet, which the state had given all operators an ultimatum as to when they would be able to have to replace these buses. And so, we've had a 10-year plan in order to get fuel-efficient buses. And basically, our plan called for the adoption, or for the purchase of about two buses a year. And for the 1920 year, we are making that one purchase that we budgeted that would be offset by a $50,000 grant from the state of Oregon. The second bus would be under our traditional leasing arrangements. And when we did the plan all these many years ago, we sort of came up with an effective interest rate from 2.9% to 4%, figuring out how much we would be investing over the years. And this, lease this year is coming in at a 3.05% interest rate from our finance offer. So, we're still in pretty good shape. That long-term plan is costing about what we thought it would cost. But, in order to commit that money for the next seven years, we do need board action. So, I am hoping that you will approve this lease purchase agreement to replace this bus. And this one will actually be a trip bus, and it, because it is a trip bus, we take it on those longer field trips and things. It will not be a propane bus. We've been purchasing propane buses for our local transportation, and this one would actually be a trip bus. But it will be our first trip bus, actually, with a wheelchair lift, because it has been very difficult in the past to accommodate those students without separate transportation. And this time, we found we were able to do that.
How many seats will be?
66.
But that'd be for wheelchair.
It'll be 66 plus wheelchair.
One wheelchair.
A wheelchair.
I think it will have room, I think there's room for two.
Yeah.
Right. But normally, these buses are like our 77-passengers, so it does take quite a bit of capacity out, but...
And just from a data perspective, because I asked Mike, our transportation manager, in the spring, we do highlights of, at our end-of-the-year greeting or get-together with the staff. I share out data. We had 1,019 trips last year. So, just to give you an idea of, will this bus be used, we have over 1,000 trips over the last, each of the last two years, from what Mike has shared with me, just on field trips and sporting events and different types of things, so...
And at least one bus breakdown in Tacoma.
At least one bus breakdown, which was solved, so.
Hey!
Having good partners.
Does the bus, we didn't worry about? Oh, so, in addition to this bus, we're buying a bus, is that what I...
We are buying a bus. The second bus, because the, to receive the money from the VW diesel settlement for the state, they identified which of our buses was eligible for replacement. We only have one. So, we are replacing that bus. It is a special education bus, and we are replacing that bus with the VW money, because it's a much smaller, it's a 20-passenger bus, so...
Okay. So, it's a one-for-one replacement?
Correct. Exactly. Yeah. And this one, the bus this replaced, this leased bus replaces, we can still use for a little while. But the other interesting thing about this replacement plan the state has put us through, if we do decide to get rid of the bus that doesn't meet the emission standards, we cannot sell it. We cannot sell it to anyone who will be using it to transport people. You can't sell it to a farm that would like to use it to transport workers. You cannot sell it to a church or a Sunday school that would need a bus to transport students.
Can I buy it and turn it into an RV?
You can't.
That's about all you can do.
I don't know if we can sell it to you. It's kind of silly. I mean, there are going to be these...
Can we donate one here, too?
No, you can't, no, you can't even.
It cannot be used.
You can't even donate it.
They want it off the road, basically.
They want them off the roads. This plan is to get these old, non-fuel-efficient diesel buses off the roads.
What, this new bus that's not propane? Now, what, is this a clean diesel bus?
Yes, yep. And we had purchased a couple of diesel buses before we started this plan that met the standards. So, it's, but it's just getting these old buses out. But then, we basically surplus them at the state for parts and things.
So, this is consistent with our strategy. It's consistent with our budget.
Exactly.
This is something that we've talked about just a couple times a year.
We've been pretty diligent. I have been very pleased that, as a board and a budget committee, we've been able to keep this commitment, because it felt like a really big lift in 2015-16 to say that we were going, by 2025, we were going to be able to meet that. And making this long-range plan and making this kind of generous estimate of the interest so that we can layer these leases in such a way that we can continue to pay that. We will, we will not top out our top amount that we are, and this is all paid for with the reimbursement we get from the state for equipment purchases. It's not 100%, but it's money that we have to dedicate to that. And the way we're going on our curve, our, we'll be putting more and more and more towards these leases for another three years, and then it tapers off, right, as these early leases start falling off, such that we will have the replacement done by 2023 or '24. But those last few years, we'll just be paying less and less, and that money will be available to other things.
And these, are these leases structured such that we actually, I mean, it looks like we own the bus at the end of the lease?
Exactly. They are lease purchase, and that is, you know, obviously, a great advantage for us, because these things run for several hundred thousand miles once you get them in, and especially the propane buses, the maintenance on them has been so easy, so low cost to us, but these, the seven-year lease has been a good, good deal for us.
Cece, can you clarify, then, the motion for the board? It says in the board package, it's a lease purchase agreement as presented to replace one school bus. Does it actually, does the motion need to account for both the purchase and the lease, two buses?
It does not. This is just the lease, because we're committing, the rest of it's budgeted. The purchased bus is in the budget to purchase. This is to commit for a seven-year commitment, so you have to commit future boards to this lease payment.
Okay. So, it is correct in the board package?
It is correct, right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Cece, is the 20-passenger bus, is it diesel or propane?
That one will be propane.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
You have to read this thing. I'm joking. You could say I still...
What are we reading?
It's not there. It's on here. It's on the packet, Jerry.
Jerry has moved that it's actually the motion in the board package. I moved into a lease purchase agreement with Santander Bank, North America, as presented to replace one school bus in accordance with the 2015 fleet replacement plan. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Don. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, everybody. That passes unanimously, and that is the end of our standard agenda. So, at this point, if a board member would like to share any thoughts, you have the floor.
Well, these new buses, the new diesel bus, I have a friend that works for a bus, private bus company, and he's bought a couple of new Bluebirds, and they made a trip to, up in Washington, other side of Seattle, run almost 300 miles one way, and he, when he fueled the buses, one of them took 16 gallons, and another one took maybe 17 gallons, which is almost nothing. That's better than my car's doing.
That's amazing.
No, the new diesel is even very fuel-efficient.
That's awesome. I feel even better about that motion we just passed.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I guess I would just add to some of the comments we had earlier about the career education buses. I think it's easy to say career technical education, it's not so easy for me to say, I guess, and kind of think that that means college, but it doesn't. It means a widespread spectrum of things, and I think we are doing a good job of expanding that spectrum, but it needs to continue to grow, so I think that's it. It was a nice challenge for delivering that, and it's nice to know that we're on a path to move that direction.
Thanks, Don. Anyone else?
I just want to echo what Don said. Many years ago, we had an outstanding trade program here in Central School District, and even had a housing construction class, and there were lots of opportunities for kids, and I'm really excited to see us moving in that direction so that kids have lots and lots of options. And I know that the last couple of years, we've also had a career fair out at Polk County for the trades, and just an excellent, excellent idea. So, excited about that.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, again, for attending tonight. I think the school year is off to a great start. Look forward to welcoming the kids back and the staff back later in the month, and look forward to seeing the board on the 19th. With that, we are adjourned.